I'm glad to listen to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
You could have sat there for an hour and it wouldn't have been a problem.
I know, exactly.
All right, let's approve some minutes for July 2025.
Let's look at the minutes.
I already looked at them here.
Yeah, I did email them out so you guys could pre-read them.
I did, I did pre-read them, I did it. You still can add them again.
Yes.
I actually do look at the emails these days, I promise I do. And I will move to approve the minutes from July.
I second it.
Oh, whatever. Okay. Uh, we need to approve the bills for August 2025.
Unless I have not looked at these.
So, um, on the bills, I did some more transfers that you'll see that are gonna go up to the LGIP funds, just to show that I'm gonna move that money. The water one, it's a little over 20,000 that we can move over, and I feel comfortable with that. So we can double that fund happening over at the state treasurer investment. Um, on the visa in general, I did overwrite that because we are gonna buy those radar signs. Kinda talked about that as the stop signs. And we found some for not a terrible price.
So, yes, I just lost it, hang on.
Oh, never mind, yes. I think radar signs would be more effective than a stop sign there.
I, I think they, they're effective for me and Shelley, because sometimes you don't realize how fast you're going. I think they will be very effective personally. Now, so I already told you this, but I'm really glad you moved the money over to savings to make it some passive income. I'm really excited about that. I'm sorry to break at you, okay?
No, I'm just gonna say I agree about, like, the signs in first, going to the schools and stuff, you know, I think it helps.
Yeah, it helps. When I used to drive the kid to school, it'd slow me down. I do, you don't realize, you just don't think about it.
If we can get a cop to stand behind it for just a little bit, it's like there's a consequence.
That would even be...
Yeah, unfortunately, the sheriff's department no longer does a reserve program, reserve deputy program, all their deputies have been to the post certificate and everything. They don't do that anymore. If they did, I could walk down with all my post certificates and, you know, be able to go out there with, you know, go down, get, pick up with a patrol car, come up and issue tickets, but they don't do it anymore.
And so, there used to be a cop, Ian Baseout.
Oh.
He's Alliance husband. We had a cop in retirement.
Oh, really?
He's pretty old though. And I've lived here all my life, so.
Is that the hundred dollar budget for police that hasn't changed in years? Like, where does this go? I never see it leave. He must got paid a hundred dollars or something.
About back then, they were probably a fortune, no?
They would probably pay with the fines. It's how judges usually pay for their crimes.
Good point.
Conflict of interest, obviously. The end of the month is more expensive for the criminals than the first of the month.
Yeah. Gotta pick up more people, so you know. I mean, how should I pay the bills?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay, exactly. Okay. All right, the budget hearing. So I have a cue card here, hopefully we do this right.
If it's wrong, it's my fault.
So we're gonna open the hearing, uh, we're gonna ask the council for comments.
This is for the fiscal year 2025. Okay, so as you're looking over that, I wanted to bring something up that I don't know ever really been talked about. I kinda caught on to it last year, and then more so this year when I attended my tax commission class. So if you look at the budget for tax levy, about 23,000 in there, they can't go over what you publish. So I printed these off so you can look at them, if that one has my notes. So something that we've never really talked about. If you want to share that, or if you want your own. Okay. Every year, they kind of, they, this is your LT form that you fill out, this is the month of this year coming up. So every year, they automatically put in this 3% increase. And this is where we've never really talked about, do we take a 3% increase? And you can increase it more, but that's a whole other extra step. Um, if you do not take that 3%, um, so if you turn the page, this page, right down here, it shows you $657 is that 3% increase for us. If you don't take that, you can take less than 3%, zero, down to zero. It goes into what's called foregone, which is the 792, the recovery of foregone amounts.
Okay.
792 is what we currently have in foregone. You can, um, take part of that, like, they're basically saying that is money that you have. You just didn't levy it when you could, but you can levy it future. But there's restrictions to that, so it's not really smart to not take that 3% increase, because you can only take the foregone um, at a 1% increase for general purposes, or 3% if you have a specific capital project. So, I just want to be clear moving forward, what we're doing with that 3%. Um, if you leave anything to go into foregone, you have to have a resolution for that. If you take anything out, you have to have a resolution for that. So, just wanna be clear.
Okay.
To protect my butt and future whatever.
You're gonna, like, do this minutes for, because?
This is the tax levy, so, uh, property taxes that everybody pays this year.
Okay. So how much the, are we getting our, so, the 17,000, does that mean Baseout's getting the 17,000?
That's the total net taxable value. But I can't explain all of their calculations. I'm just looking at the 3% increase. I can change that number, which changes our bottom line. Clear down the last page.
Okay.
We'll get $22,416 in property tax revenue over the next fiscal year.
If you increase it 3%?
If you take that 3%.
And then, if we take the 3% and we increase our tax revenue, are we restricted on what we can spend that money on?
This is your general.
So, right now, when was the last time we actually did an increase?
Every year it's been done, I just think it's never been talked about. I'm just trying to bring Dwight moving forward so that something like...
So we don't have to vote on this?
Well, I think it's part of the budget hearing to just be clear that we are doing the cost of living 3% increase.
Okay, okay, thank you.
What are your thoughts?
Yeah, so the 3% is automatic.
Okay, thank you.
So if you don't take it, then you do a resolution to have it as foregone. And then, when you do that, that preserves your right to take it later. But what that, it's not like honey sitting at the bank, though. You just hit everybody with a big assessment all at once if you don't take it.
Okay.
As small as you are, it's a lot easier to take the 3% each time. Because it'll rather hit somebody with a jump.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I was clear in my safety.
Thank you, I didn't, I didn't know that was happening, I probably should have, but I didn't, so thank you, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, as small as you are, I think you can take the 3%.
I agree.
Yeah, it's kinda dumb not to, because you can only take 1% really, for general purposes. What is that, of $657?
There's five dollars, go ahead.
Well, if you take the foregone, you gotta have a public hearing. So now it's gonna cost you a hundred and twenty dollars to have a public hearing to publish it, or a hundred fifty.
So we can get across here.
In the last class, there was a cemetery district, they're like, we have like $40,000 in our foregone, how do we even get that? So, yeah.
Okay, good to know.
Any comments from the public?
Can, all right, since that 3% is automatic, can the city increase that?
Yes.
At state law, state?
The 3%?
It's a public hearing.
Well, the public hearing, can that be increased? No, I think you're limiting your 3%.
I think you can go, uh, I don't have all of the notes right here in front of me, but I, you can go over the 3%, but there are limitations.
Don't you have to do an override, don't you have to do that?
Yeah, like...
It's, you know, it's like a budget hearing, you gotta put it...
It's a process.
It's a process. I've never seen a city go above the 3%. So, this is my take here.
And, and like, I think it's like 5% the max fit, or 4% even, that you can increase, but you can go up to 8% with certain areas. If you have like a certain project or...
Yeah, I've never seen a city go past the 3%.
Okay.
Just, just asking the, 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 uh...
And I don't know when that...
Question.
When that amount went into the foregone.
So, yeah, it's, all right, so we're not worried about, oh, let's pump it up. Well, you know, they add another few percent, you know, so you're talking $400.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, spend a lot of time on how much you get at $400.
And the public notice is kind of expensive.
Yeah, it's, you spend $400 to get $400.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's still looking.
3% sounds good to me.
Oh, start lighting it way down. So, our building maintenance, you think we can go down $3,000 and be okay?
Yeah, and we don't ever, I, I haven't seen it maxed out to 10. I guess there are things we should think about, like a roof eventually, I don't know when the roof was changed last. We lived here, yeah.
I thought they, they shingled it.
Brian, did that not, when he built the corner of the shop?
But how long ago was that? That was kinda when we first moved here, that was 11 years ago.
It wasn't that long ago. Right, because they, when the foundation fixed the corner and then didn't clean the roof line?
Shingles a little.
I know they did siding and a roof about that time, but I don't understand, it's been a while.
Road and Bridge.
It looks okay to me, but I'm just saying.
Oh, I don't know what's going on.
What, the Road and Bridge, why?
That was the 30,000 for the LTAC, uh, report that we did.
Oh, that's just...
I probably should have put it in its own category, but...
Okay.
Road and Bridge, we do not get a lot of money from.
Are you saying you're lowering the budget for, uh, by 10,000 for the, for buildings or something?
Um, I probably shifted it somewhere to put like, I don't know.
Now, was that spread out, was that spread out all, over all the buildings, or?
Yeah, I can...
Because I was, because I know Brian mentioned sometime, something about the, the shop or whatever, getting it insulated?
There's a lot that needs to happen over there, yes.
So, just kind of wondering if, uh, if that's still needs to be done, um, why lower it down if that's something that's, like you said, needs to be done?
Well, so this next year, I put 60,000 into road budget.
Building maintenance.
Because we need to seal something. And so that's where some money went. I, we did go to BMO Coalition meeting, Brian and I did, and Dusty, the guy that's over Road and Bridge at the county.
They'll say you're only dropping by 3,000 actually.
Yeah.
From 13,000 down to 10,000. Okay.
Um, anyways, they're going to help us seal codes and roads as of right now. And I told Brian, I said, I'm gonna leave that 60,000, we better max it out, and let them seal at least a couple.
Why did our insurance go down so much?
Because I spread it out over three funds.
Oh, okay.
The auditor asked me why we don't.
Oh, that makes sense.
It should.
Yeah, I agree.
So actually, our insurance did go up because Brian's full-time, and then we upped our values on everything, we were very underinsured.
I'm sure we were. Did we have, did we look into insurance for a park?
That is not a thing, it does not affect your insurance. We just need to figure out where we can put it.
For what?
Okay.
Like, if we were to put up a little park area?
Yeah, and your recreational area is your best opportunity.
Yeah.
You did not know, okay.
You guys realized they took a park out at Blackfoot and set it by the airport, all reclining equipment and stuff. You should look into that.
Really?
And there's a salt spreader and some lakes.
Continue with that.
Where's that?
It's right near the airport. Just not right now.
Do we just go pick it up?
Where they put the new dog down?
I'm sure we have.
Yeah, we've got a beach.
Have we ever looked at other, which places? I have not. You guys had...
That would be Wade Gardner.
I mean, I guess he run the council, did that, I don't know, maybe the worst. They had three companies come in. Um, yeah, PSI, Snake River, is it, what's the one that Guy's brother-in-law does, is that T-Tom? For garbage? I mean, if you wanted to look into, how many other people, give us a quote, um, I guess that's...
I was just curious, because they go up every year, so my parents used to have PSI. And when they called to cancel, they were like, oh, we will match Orbeet. So I'm like, maybe we should get a call and see if they will match Orbeet, if there's some that are...
Yeah. I mean, I had talked to, for one time, they wanted to do our garbage, and they said PSI is cheaper. They would have to charge us 20, at the time.
They've been dependable, I mean, donated, and cost of living does go up every year.
Because my parents, I'm like, theirs is cheaper than mine, and we have 150 plus cans.
Yeah.
So I just thought, if we, you know, kind of do that out there too.
Yeah, we don't have a contract contract, I mean, as far as I know.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Isn't that for cans?
So what do we do now?
We've got a closer hearing, you guys got a motion on it.
Are we done?
We'll make a motion, close the hearing, public hearing.
Well, you can close the public hearing, do a motion to approve the budget.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it. And then do we have to all do, or do we have to second that?
I have to second.
Yeah, second it, catch the wrong motion.
And then it's a roll call vote, right?
Yeah, you have, you have your ordinance, don't you?
What do you mean?
So you pass the ordinance, so you have a bunch of ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So then do a roll call vote.
Okay, so roll call vote, Pam. Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Two markets, and the wave of green for the ordinance.
Didn't say that, do you need to say that?
Yeah, put it in the bills.
And I'm about to read the rest. Yes.
All right, we've got a budget hearing, uh, fee resolution. So we gotta open the hearing, and we need to ask council for comments.
Okay, and I needed some explanations, so, I guess you could kind of go one by one? Or do you want me to go down to the hookup fees and electronic payment? Do you see anything else that, because you guys kind of told me the prices last month.
So, hookup fees are 5,000 a piece now.
Well...
It can be.
Up two.
Up two.
So, do you want prices on hooking up?
Sure. So what is the other cities' charge that are about ours?
So other cities' charge, it really varies.
Okay.
But a lot of them is like around 1,500 plus your costs and labor. So, Brian has been trying, pretty much since he's been in, in here, to get prices. Um, and we still don't have all the information.
Okay.
But, on water hookup, um, Guy said everywhere has a one-inch line, that's the standard that they put in, in Baseout. So, just for the cost of the meter box and the one-inch pipe, you're looking at $1,563.80. That does not include the tapping.
Okay.
Which is the actual, like, putting a hole into the water line and connecting it.
Okay.
Um, you can rent the equipment to do it, and that price varies, but he couldn't give anybody to give them a price on it, they just said it varies.
Okay.
So I don't know what varies on that, and how you set that in there, but minimum, $1,563.64 comes out of our pocket for...
That's just tapping, that's not the machinery?
That's not tapping.
That's not Brian's time?
That's meter and line.
Okay.
All the stuff here listed. So, um, the tapping is on top of that.
Okay.
And...
Do we have a time, how long it usually takes to tap it?
It doesn't take very...
You gotta dig it all up, and you gotta do all that stuff, too.
A tap of pipe takes about half an hour.
So, the way our ordinance is written, too, like, digging into the road and any of that falls on the homeowner. We don't have to cover that, except...
But do we have to do the digging down to the water and tapping it? That's on us, correct?
I think that's on the homeowner.
To the meter box, isn't it?
From the meter to the main, to the city, and then the main, main, assuming the meter to the house is the customer. So I've seen most of them do it. Do that when you're in control of your standards are on here.
So we will have some labor in?
You can have some labor.
Okay.
But the digging into the road, that falls on the homeowner, yeah.
So we have to figure, I would figure probably what you think, just to be safe on the safe side, at least an hour of Brian's time?
Maybe a month.
I, I don't know, so...
You're probably, you're probably a day.
Yeah, you're full day.
So, fully hours, okay. As we've talked about this, too, the other thing that Husk always reminds you, and you've kind of said it, is it also should add a little bit to your reserve and plan for future growth.
They have to buy into the system, right? Because you have your main lines and your wells and all of that. And so your wells are the capital improvement funds, so when you have to add another well, you've got it.
Okay.
Right, so they're buying into a system.
And I have no idea what Brian makes, so we have to...
Sewer hookup, really, um, you didn't have any prices on sewer, but, but it's not gonna be as expensive as this either.
So for the water, we then would add, add at least eight hours of Brian's time, then we gotta add the rental and gas or whatever on top of that, because we want to cover all of our expenses.
We do.
So I don't know, what do you guys think's a good rate that we should start?
The other thing that I kind of, um...
The price of the meter will probably really go up shortly, too.
Oh, I'm sure all of it's gonna go up.
You gotta expect that possibly.
It has to a while. So you go to a lot of city councils, Garrett, what do you think's a good rate, or do you have an opinion?
Yeah, and the problem is they're all over the board. The, the only thing that I always hesitate, makes me nervous, is because, um, your fees have to be reasonably related to the costs that you, you know... The, the risk you guys have is you're so small, you can't afford to have the study done.
Right.
To tell you exactly what it should be. You know, we, we even looked at, like, for Aberdeen, you know, the, this FCS that did Blackwood's study, it was a hundred and twenty-some-odd thousand dollars for Blackwood to do a study on all their fees. Well, even for like Aberdeen was eight or $10,000. Well, you'll never get that back, uh, the smaller you are. So, you just kind of have to look around and decide what's reasonable.
I mean, it has to be in three.
Do you think that if we increase it to 25, that would be enough to cover Brian's time or rental?
I would think so.
The increase of the, of all of our pieces? And, because I mean, I, I can't, I was, I have no clue, it isn't tested, I don't know what, how you all do, but do you think that will be enough to cover, or do you think we should go to three?
A lot of the time, these fees are put in H and K, uh, Stedman, those guys, you hire them to come out and do this, and Brian just is the person on the job.
Oh.
Just like the inspector.
So, so whatever H and K charges, or Stedman, or those guys...
They're gonna charge us way more.
Not all the time.
Well, I mean, this is just covering parts here, this fifteen, sixteen.
We, we had, Larry was mayor here for quite a while, and he was H and K a lot. And it was more reasonable to do that than it was for Guy to go get the backhoe and tear something up, because they're insured.
Oh.
If, if you hit a line underneath, that's on you.
Oh.
That isn't, that isn't on the homeowner, that goes back to the contractor.
Okay, that's interesting. So what do you think's a good rate? You way know way more than I do about this.
Well, Baseout's not gonna grow a whole bunch of anywhere.
No, but we do have, we do have new houses.
But you're gonna have some new lines that are gonna be going in, because the time is getting on those lines, those hookups are starting to fail.
So do you think 25 is a fair enough number, or do you think we should go to three?
I think, let's do 25 for now and see where it goes from there.
Yeah, I just, I think you're probably more like three or four, three, five seems a little much, but...
So you're thinking three?
Because you're gonna be $2,000 just in expenses, hard, hard.
Uh, we better go a little harder than...
So, I didn't say $3,000.
Not providing...
That's, that's just materials, and you still have the permit and stuff, you still got, what I'm, in county, get that. So this isn't just some whim, I can't, Gil, Gil and I can't go out and go rent a backhoe and start digging holes in the road. We, we still have to be permitted, it still has to be inspected, and it still has to be insured.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you think if we do 3,000, that's gonna also help us grow so that we can actually replace things as needed?
But like I said, those hookups...
That's a great question.
Those hookups, right now, if it breaks from the meter to the street, to the main line, that's on the city. But if it breaks from the meter to the house, that's homeowner. That's, that's in all the cities, pretty much, regardless of...
So I don't know, because I'm okay with three, but I don't know if that gives us enough cushion.
Well, it's better than a thousand.
All right, having, having been a, like, a Class A general engineering contractor in California, working on underground water lines, sewer lines and stuff, I had my own company and I sold it. I had worked at the second largest underground company for nine years as well. The time to do a tap, that, just to do the tap, not to plumbing anything else, if you have the equipment on the truck, it takes three people half an hour to do a tap.
Yeah, it's kind of a...
Then you gotta do all your, then you gotta do your, uh, lay your pipe out and stuff, and I'm not sure what the requirement, requirements are around here for this. But once you put, before you lay that water line down, in California, you had to put six inches of gravel in first.
You had to do your compaction.
You'd compact it, and you had to get all of it compacted first, then you lay your line in, then you put in six inches of gravel, then you put in the, the tracer tape, it's a, like, a, a polyfoil thing that says water line on it, it goes above it. And then you put another 12 inches of, of rock on top of that. And that's, you know, that, that's, that is underground insurance doing it the proper way.
Now, isn't, isn't there supposed to be sand separating the pipe from the rock?
No, not for water, for gas, there's gotta be sand. For electrical, there's gotta be sand, but not...
For electrical, there's gotta be sand, but not water or sewer. Which a lot of companies say, screw it, we're just gonna do sand everything, they're gonna do joint trench, or they're gonna do everything together and do, do construction. But personally, and I hate raising rates and stuff, I would say for a hookup, to take care of the expenses of doing it, and like Garrett said, put stuff into the, for future stuff and get, for buying into the system, at least five thousand. Cause I thought, one of, one, he mentioned once before, and somebody's going seventy-five hundred for a hookup.
Michael's seventy-five hundred.
Yeah. I would go as counties, you know, you could go with the county seat and just say, hey, they can get it done cheaper, so we gotta go at least theirs. But I would say right now, if you wanna do at least five thousand for a new hookup. And they're, they're buying into the system, the infrastructure. That's part of that fee is for us buying into the infrastructure, as well as all the expenses of hooking up. And like you said, like Alan said, it's, you know, we're, we're gonna have to start replacing stuff, o- other hookups, because they're getting old, they're failing.
A lot of them are broken. Not necessarily like the pipe, but meters are.
Yeah. So that's, you know, that's all part of that is, you know, they're buying into the infrastructure on that, so. That's, you know, I would, I would say five thousand.
It's kind of a maintenance fee.
But what risk do we put ourselves at?
Well, if somebody tried to challenge and say it's not reasonably related to the cost, the, probably I don't see you getting challenged necessarily either because certainly you've got three, four thousand.
Well, there's one person that asked about hookups, they're not in the city. And that's other thing, like I think's gonna start happening eventually is all these county roads, they'll have to hook into the city. Anyways, and Brian said, well, we're looking at raising it, just so you know, it could go up to five thousand, and he didn't even blink an eye.
But you're, I mean, it's still on the low end, it's just, it's a big jump, but it's, I mean.
Have you done an actual cost estimate about exactly what it's gonna cost, like you said, with your gravel and pipe and all that?
We're talking about parts of such a floor.
I missed that part.
Yeah. And it's, it's easily twenty-five hundred to three grand.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so five thousand is not that much to cover that three grand, all the labor, materials, everything else, plus to, for their buy-in into the existing system. You gotta remember, they have to buy into the existing system.
What do you think, Pam?
And I hate raising rates, just wanna make it clear, I hate raising rates, but I also hate.
It's like sewer, it's the same thing. I, Brian doesn't have anything on the sewer. You could, I mean, a lot of cities, the sewer is a little less, so. It probably should be increased from a thousand.
Yeah, yeah. With the sewer, is there enough capacity?
No, Basalt.
I didn't think so.
Though really and truly, the ponds were never built to hold capacity, they were meant to overflow into the little field. But.
Laws changed.
Laws changed in the state, so now you can no longer do that, so, yeah.
So in other words, if they have to do, if you have more sewer hookups, that is not gonna be sufficient, so that's gonna have to be enlarged.
We need, we send that.
We send out the first.
Oh, send it to first, okay. But is that, what's that cost gonna be?
Um, last time we flowed for about a month and a half, and it was around six thousand.
For a month and a half? Well then, if you don't increase the sewer fees.
These are just, this is just for, for new construction or, yeah.
But still, that's gonna help offset.
It's supposed to.
Some of that.
See, Ammon's sending theirs to Shelley right now.
Jesus.
Because Idaho politics is overflowing, they're, they're outgrowing.
Yeah, they've got the district, sewer district up there for that.
So like I said, Ammon sends all their stuff to Shelley. The way it was gonna work when all this started was we were gonna send ours to Shelley too. Then Firth built their new plant, so.
Is Firth big enough to handle whatever we do?
Oh, yeah.
They just put two or three million dollars into the plan.
They actually function better having our.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
So they should pay us.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, why?
Said I truly have a very pretty bill to go with that.
Their treatment plants need a certain flow to be a, a minimal flow to be optimal cell, okay then.
What do you think it should be, Brittany?
I think probably five is probably where we need to be then. I mean, I don't feel like we have a bunch of people that are gonna be moving in real quick.
A lot of that, a lot of that's built in the house cost also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think five, so we can.
I'm gonna have to say it's probably should be five too.
Like Mayor said, things are probably gonna be going up, so say someone doesn't use it for five years. I mean, you never know in five years what it could be, I mean.
Well, we should stay on top of it.
Yeah.
I would hope so. But Blackfoot's seventy-five, I mean.
Well, if you go to Rexburg, it's probably twenty or twenty-five now.
Holy cow.
Yes, when I built a car wash in Rexburg twenty years ago, um, I was about seven total for everything in Blackfoot. When we called it a hundred and fifteen in Rexburg, they were actually sixty-eight thousand versus seven in St. Niagara, which was ten times.
You mean sixty-eight hundred?
Sixty-eight thousand.
Oh.
Yeah, that is. So I mean, for sewer water, now those are bigger than residential, but still, it was ten times, I mean, so you're all over the world.
Yeah. Example of, my, my nephew is a superintendent of inspections for, um, East State Municipal, uh, Utility District in Northern California. For a hookup, versus for sewer and water hookup, you're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's in California, not here.
So.
It's been that, it's been thirty-five thousand dollars for twenty years, they haven't increased it because they got a bunch of, they got a bunch of stuff done under grants and stuff.
Yeah, I'd have to say four or five, I think, the more I listen, I mean, yeah, we probably should do five on both.
Even on the sewer? I don't know if we've justified sewer just yet.
If we just go with three, um, sewer.
But don't, is it, how much, what parts do we need for sewer, do we know? Cause they're gonna go up in price too, no matter what we price them at now. And we have to, if there are more houses come, we have to send more to Firth.
How many more houses do you think are gonna come in?
Depends what development around the city.
Yeah, I've heard people talk about, they wanna talk to so-and-so about the field and put up apartments. You've got a truck place going.
When it's outside the city, you're not all the.
I know. But they probably like, with the state regulations coming down, the line, they may have to.
They may have to, but that would be returning their cost.
Right. They have to put in lift stations and all of that, yeah.
I need to get over this cost.
Well, I, we can go lower if you think lower's better. I have no idea. I.
I think your sewer's gonna be better off if it's lower and, and your water higher.
Yeah. But I think there is more cost in water.
So what's the current hookup for sewer?
Thousand.
A thousand, they're both a thousand.
Both a thousand?
What do you think, Garrett?
You know, I think you're probably safe at five, and you could go both with that, I think you're probably safe. There's chances of getting a challenge on it, when you're still less than a lot of your surrounding communities. It is a big jump, but I think that's just a discussion point.
Yeah, it's cause we have kept up.
But you're still gonna have to dig and.
And repair and.
Make sure things are supported by.
Your sewer hookup is cheaper than a water hookup, parts-wise, but your sewer plant is more expensive than your wells, so, you know, so anyways.
I think we should just rip off the band-aid and do five on both, because we are really, we should've done this a long time ago and it would've been such a big jump.
Yeah.
As a taxpaying citizen who, who may put, you put it up, I would still say go to fifteen for sewer, five thousand for water. And that way the system is, people, the system is.
You still gotta hire, you still gotta hire, like what Alan said, H and K, for digging the sewer also, so you gotta figure those expenses and it's gonna be more than fifteen hundred bucks to do that.
Okay, so what do we do now?
Well, we, let's talk about electronic payment fee, we set that at five. And I have been taking electronic payments, so I can tell you the average, and the average fee has been five dollars and fourteen cents over all the transactions I've had. I think I've done about twenty transactions.
So what do we do? We can only do five, cause that's what we published, huh?
Cause we really didn't know where.
Well, the reality is, is if you hire H and K to come out and do all the digging.
We're talking about electronic fees.
Oh, sorry. Shouldn't we finish that?
No, well, I think we'll finish it all at once, once we have them all set.
So we're losing fourteen cents a transaction?
Not necessarily, but I guess, yeah. Cause it is a percentage, right?
If we do the, if we do the five dollars now, can we, and if we start to figure it out, we're losing money, then we can change it later. Okay, that's fine. I think five dollars is very reasonable. I mean, people are, if they wanna use it, they can pay the fee.
They're happy to.
That's just it.
Okay, the rest of the list, you have the, I'm gonna start, start at the top. Utility security deposit, one month bill is a hundred and thirty dollars, we published a hundred and thirty, it probably should be at least one month.
I agree.
A reconnect fee, that's if you get shut off, and you have to pay that reconnect fee to have Brian go turn you back on. We put, we published fifty dollars, it's currently twenty.
Do you wanna maybe double that fee?
Yeah, pay for Brian's time. Um, cause that's holiday, weekends. Well, after hours, weekends, about holidays, a hundred dollars, and I, that's what a lot of the other cities charge.
I think we should.
They do charge you extra for weekends.
I don't see why they should be different.
My son did that in Blackfoot, that was his job to turn people off and turn them back on, and that's what it was. Uh, service call fee, this one, we don't really charge a service call fee. We never have, but it is in the ordinances. It was at five dollars. And then you could charge more if it was deemed necessary, basically. I don't remember the exact wording, but that's what I was getting at. I think that having Brian around, part of that is public service, for those who pay their property tax and live here, all of those things. But we do have people that aren't in Basalt that we service. Those three houses over there, we may have more in the future. I think that that's kinda where that would come into play.
Are we still servicing them?
Yeah, those three houses.
Oh, I thought we still.
So why don't you get the people who actually live in the city that make a twenty-five and those that are outside?
Oh, right, we don't really charge, charge it.
Oh, for, am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It can be up to fifty.
It can be, like, and, and there's also like that part too, where some people can become a nuisance. And if you just have to go lunch in a while, yeah, it's not a big deal.
It's like one of the neighbors, they wanted to put in a hydrant, so they called the city and said, hey, can you come turn the water off real quick? No problem, sent Brian out, turn the water off.
Yeah, but that's twenty dollars.
No.
Well, I mean, I, by definition, it should be, right?
It can be, but it's, it's, we, we can consider that as a public service also. So they change out their hydrant and then say, oh, we're done, or he leaves the deal there and I can turn it back on.
Well, we would be upfront.
Yeah.
If you become a nuisance.
Are you talking to me, Robin?
So.
Yeah.
That's how I think I would apply that.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So now I think we've gone over everything.
Got everything?
Any comments, any comments from out there?
Public comments?
So let me just ask you a question, so when you're talking about a service call or a reconnect fee.
The reconnect fee is like if you get shut off, cause you haven't paid your bill.
Right, right, and you shut it off and it's, uh, Friday, and you.
If it's after hours on Friday, yeah, the weekend, it's gonna be a hundred dollars now.
Yeah. Well, service fee is more of like, hey, like you saying, uh, it's more, it's not a.
Yeah, I understand the service fee.
You're just, just a little five dollar, like you said, you've never charged it because.
Part of that's just public service and being able to have Brian.
Yeah.
Well, part of that's what you're paying with your bills too.
But a reconnect fee, yeah, I mean, that's, that's on the person that doesn't pay the bill.
Well, it's not just the reconnect, I mean, it's up to that reconnect too, the cost.
When the water's shut off.
Well, it takes time for Brian to go out there, turn you back on and flush your lines and, yeah.
So if your water's shut off for a period of time, he has to come back, you have to open up all your faucets, he has to open it, let it all drain, and flush through. And it takes a little time, and it's kind of a nuisance, you should've just paid your bill, it would've been a problem. So it's, it's something to help discourage, you know, pay, just pay your bill.
Don't get shut off.
Get shut off.
Okay?
Think every, as a citizen, I think everything sounds good now.
So there's no other comments, and you just need to close your colleague in and take the motion.
So do you guys have any questions before we do that, sort of, on the, on the, uh, connection fees for sewer? So they're talking about that before you guys got here, that they're gonna up the, increase the connection fees, which is appropriate, because it does cost a whole lot more than the thousand dollars that's being charged now.
And that's only for like new construction.
Yeah, new construction.
New, yeah.
But five thousand?
Yeah. Like I said, more, more my nephews, uh, he was East State Municipal District, thirty-five thousand dollars. Grant, uh, Garrett, what was it for you, for Rexburg?
Well, so Rexburg's, I would have guessed probably in the thirty thousand, twenty-five, thirty thousand, or even now, so sixty-eight thousand.
Is that for a house?
Well, that was a commercial project, but it was ten times what Blackwood was.
Yeah.
So.
But they also, there's certain guidelines and whatnot that they have to meet in order to do that. Rocks, the way they have to set it, they have to compact it.
We, we can't do.
All that, it's, you can't do it for a thousand dollars, it's costing the city more than, than what they're charging.
We can't do it the way the good old boys used to do it. Dad can't come out in his tractor, dig a hole and hook it up.
Really?
Yeah.
It's, it's all different now, like.
Are you going to do anything else, or just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I replaced Dad.
Why, why are we hooking more up and we can't put new homes in here?
We're not necessarily.
You can put new homes in, you wanna sell your pasture, go ahead and sell it.
You're not supposed to put more people in ours, we can't have it.
Who says this?
Everybody's gonna like, they're, our sewer water won't handle more.
We're, we're okay, we're okay. Uh, if it don't fill our pond, we send it to Firth. It's okay.
That's what I found out today too, yeah.
So if you wanna build a house in your pasture, great.
And actually, we have really good water rights, we've learned that.
Yeah, there's a little hookup there on that pasture that just look up into a very, uh, away.
You know, it isn't that you can't build a house, it's just, it's just.
But there is still a restriction for a half an acre of right.
Yes.
For residents.
Hey, I don't want to say I'll think, Rob.
We haven't talked about it, but you have to have a half an acre for both pieces, correct, Robin? What do you mean, two pieces? So if you're gonna split it, then you have to have a half an acre, say mom wanted to sell her pop, property, or I mean the pasture, she'd have to have a half an acre left for where the, her house is.
Correct.
And then the other one can be split to half.
So Ethan H. dwelling has to have a half an acre, that's still.
Does that make sense? That's right, correct, Garrett, you do.
Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, we'll close the hearing and then we need a couple motions.
Motion to close the hearing, is that all we're?
Did you not?
I'm motion to approve the budget.
Not yet. You what?
Motion to approve.
Approved.
Resolution, the de-resolution.
The de-resolution.
Did you decide what the fee was gonna be?
Five thousand for each.
That should be good for a while, each.
Did somebody second it?
Well, I can second it.
I don't know, somebody did, but I will.
So just do a roll call? Okay, Pam, yes?
Yes.
Yes, Alan?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's done. Public hearing amended ordinance number eighty-seven, manufactured housing. Alright. So we're updating that.
Not bad.
Garrett can.
Yeah, well, I can, so, this is taking into place of your ordinance eighty-seven and do one oh three, if you remember when we talked about that. So eighty-seven had all the old rules, um, from, you know, eighty-six and stuff. One oh three is what amended it, um, to be the, you know, you could have two manufactured homes next to each other, which I'm not sure why they did that back in the old ordinance, but, so that your requirements don't really change, this pretty well copies what you have already, but it combines everything into one ordinance, and then it cleans up some of the requirements just into a more simple legal format. So your first, if you look, uh, A through G is stuff that you already have essentially replaced anyway.
So what's that?
Uh, so manufactured homes have to be placed on a permanent foundation, uh, you can't have the security, that's already required. Has to have a three twelve pitch roof, which is already required, uh, has to be twelve inches above grade, that's already required. Has to follow your HUD and FHA standards, again, that's already in your code. And then decks and porch materials, um, are attached to the home, and then with the comparable structures, it all looks the same. And then it all has to be anchored in steps, to meet code, and they have to be at least nine hundred square feet in area. That one is a little larger than what you had in your old ordinance from way back when, it was four hundred square feet, and it's half.
For which?
The old ordinance, used to be four hundred square feet per half.
No, what, what is that square foot?
Nine hundred.
That you live in your home.
Oh, living area, okay, I'm sorry, missed that.
And it says it has to comply with all building codes, and that's true anyway.
Yeah.
And then, um, then I, J, K, that was what they did in ordinance one oh three. Um, so those are already in place, this is just bringing them over to the new ordinance, so that, uh, we can just repeal the old ones. And so those are verbatim out of your ordinance one oh three, that you can't have a, you can't park the manufactured home on the streets and stuff when you bring it in. You can't for four hours, you gotta comply with all your other, uh, parking ordinances, um, and you can't have a mobile home court in base hall, and those are all, I say verbatim out of one oh three. It's just, this allows us to repeal the old ones, and just have one new ordinance to add.
So you said one, I'm sorry, I have a question, the one with the, the foundation. So when did that start, or the ones here that don't have a foundation, is that?
That was, that was in the old ordinance, um.
Okay, but that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's an old requirement, that requirement has not changed.
Seven?
Eighty-seven, those ordinance eighty-seven was actually passed in like eighty-six or eighty-three, something like that.
So that's been. So what's gonna happen to those that are around here that are not?
Nothing, everything's still around here.
Yes, you can't go in and make those, unless it's a health safety issue, you can't change, you'll make that change. But if it was a health safety issue, that's a different story, but. But those requirements, it's been there for forty years.
Just wanted to clean it up.
Oh, and I get that, so, what if, um, um, they have somebody that has, uh, manufactured home. That didn't have that. When it moved in, when it was moved in and doesn't have it.
So, yeah, so as long as it's not a health and safety issue, that would be.
But if they were to take down the old one and put in a new one, they would have to go by the, the standards.
Okay, thanks. Can they put in a single white, if they're updating? Can they put in a single white if that's what they have there now?
You have to comply with the new code, if you're changing it.
But what if the, the property won't fit that?
Then they gotta, I mean, either come in and get a variance, so anytime there's something that doesn't quite fit, you know, the property's a strange shape, there's something unusual, you can come into council and get a variance.
Okay.
So there's always that out, council makes the rules, they can bend the rules. But it requires a public hearing, so you don't just get a variance, for example.
Right.
You have a public hearing, so all the neighbors know about what's going on, and everybody has their input.
Yeah. So, what, what they're saying is, I'll use twenty's property for example. If he's gonna put in a newer manufactured home.
Yeah.
Then he would have to put it on a foundation, I don't know if his is on it or not now.
No, his is on the ground. His is on the ground like mine.
Oh. I didn't recognize you, okay, so he would have to put a new foundation in, and ask for a variance if he wanted. And unless he put a double wide in, and even if he put a double wide in, then it wouldn't, he would have to meet those, uh, setback guidelines.
On the age of the trailer is what I'm talking, you have to be a newer trailer that is certain day here.
It just has to meet the requirements, right? So, is that county?
That's all I've changed HUD requirements. So those are gonna be ninety, what, ninety-three or whatever.
Or maybe, so it's not the county, like there's this seventy-eight or something like that?
Yeah, 'cause that was when they first started coming in, um, and so those all, and so this just says you have to comply with FHA and HUD, and that's true anyway. So, it doesn't really change the rules at all, it's just cleaning it up.
Any other comments? No, then I guess we'll close it.
I just can ask really quick, so, the one that they were trying to do over here, with the four units, is that?
It's, they're, they're still working.
They, they're still working on it.
That's, that's in.
She kinda got the feeling that it probably wasn't enough. They're modifying.
The, the area doesn't conform to our standards, so they'll have to do fit for the standards, so.
Where's this at?
At the apartments.
Oh, they're gonna put more apartments in?
They want to.
You want.
Oh, they want to, oh.
But, but we don't have the parking, they don't have the land, they don't have the square footage, uh, there's a whole bunch of things.
She just asked for more time, that's all we're.
I know.
Then I guess we'll, uh, close the hearing and take the motion.
Take a motion, we approve the amended ordinance on manufactured housing.
Wave all required readings.
And, and wave all what required readings?
All required readings, it's one of those stupid rules, you just wave it, otherwise you're supposed to read it on three different occasions.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, Pam?
Yes.
Yep.
Laura? Alan?
Yep.
Brittany?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Let's see, what's next, discussions.
Maintenance report, Brian's not here, but he wanted to know on marking tagging cars. Berth uses this, the officer gave it to him, and said, Berth just does this, if you wanna just do this, can we do that?
Yeah, that's why I dropped it down at first.
Yeah, they said that.
So it's just gonna be tagged on there for.
Yep, so.
Forty-eight hours.
Officers come in, 'cause then they, they check the owner and they do the notifications and stuff, but you tag that, you just work with the county on that.
Okay. And then Brian and I did go to the Bingham Coalition meeting, um, that's with the county and Idaho Transportation Department there. Um, in October, they're doing their meeting where we need to have any of our future road plans, a plan there, so we're gonna get with Husk and have him help us get that ready, and that's where we can get our extra points to help us get grant money. Um, so, really that's it for Brian, I think.
Are you looking at any of these grants?
Always. Well, we tried, but we got denied for the a hundred thousand for roads, uh, but we're gonna try again. Hey, if you know of grants, you're welcome to come in and help me.
All, all roads, we agreed to co-lead.
The county at this last meeting, he did say he will help us this next year. And we're gonna try to hold him to that, so hopefully we'll get a couple done.
Well, let me know if you can help. So. Is there, speaking of grants, is there a area in town that you could put either a walking path or some kind of a slay area, is there something in town?
We're, we're working on that right now, actually.
Okay, he's gonna try to put a plan together before we really present it, but during the Basalt Bash, we heard a lot of comments and feedback that people would like to see things done. We are working on, um, a twenty thousand dollar grant from Blue Cross of Idaho, and they want us to use it to help our community be healthy. So, there is a wide range that you can put that into.
Okay, and what do you?
They like to help little communities like ours. And at first, we talked about, when we applied, Laura helped me. We very much put it in as putting, putting it on a new truck, so that we can help maintain our roads better. Or even road maintenance. Um, but after feedback on the Basalt Bash, some of the things that we've learned going to these meetings, because one of the rumors that I've been told is that parks cost the city more money, that's why we don't have one. Well, that's not true, there's an exemption on your insurance. Um, so, what areas do we really have? We don't have a lot around here, but we were looking at maybe our wellhouse on seven hundred. And try to organize a community activity, putting up a pavilion, and maybe a swing set over there.
A little park, the best we can.
Start, start there, twenty thousand isn't gonna get you a lot, so it requires something.
Your buy-in, the Parks and Rec grant for a playground.
Well, you know of something?
Oh, I know.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, uh, we're, we're gonna put together a plan of what we wanna try to accomplish, and then I'm gonna go to.
And we gotta make sure that we can put it there.
And we're gonna visit some of our community members that are involved in construction and that sort of thing, and see if they're willing to volunteer their time and efforts to put this together as, as, as we purchase the stuff, so. It involves the community to build something for the community.
So one of the grants of Parks and Rec is putting in a playground. You need so much buy-in, for example, whether it would be buy-in from Blue, Blue Cross, or community service, whatever, you can get even a splash pad. You could get all kinds of park equipment that will be paid for.
Yeah, come in and let's figure it out.
So Blue Cross, in November will have, uh, twenty thousand dollars that has been granted to us. So in November we'll have that, and hopefully by next spring, we can do something about it.
Okay, so just for Parks and Rec's grant, just for information, those grants have to be in by like the third week of January, and you have to have a certain amount done that summer, that year, and then you've got another, you, you have a whole year to get.
So you have to accomplish certain things within that fiscal year.
You have to spend a certain amount within that fiscal. And then you have, you know, a year or two years, you can extend it for another year. Um, but those are, they're really good grants to get. They've done walking paths and, well, you know, splash pads, splash pads, if I get it up. Swing sets.
We kinda talked about that a little bit, but there's just not enough money in the grant to do all that, but if there's something available, then we'll definitely.
Because that grant could cover.
Really, we have the water rights for that also, to add in something like that.
Yeah, that grant would cover the cost of all those. You just have to have a certain percentage, and I, I wanna say it's twenty percent, but I can't remember exactly anymore, um, of buy-in, whether it's, you know, service, contracted labor that's donated, or other money, funds that come in that's donated.
I think we can accomplish that.
Yeah, 'cause you could also work on a walking path, or a bike path, or whatever, and a lot of people around here walk, 'cause they go buy my house all the time. So, I think that's probably why it popped into my head, because I see so many people walking in this community.
Yep, and I think it'd be good for kids to have something to do.
And not on your.
You have two great departments.
Except we can't put. If they could, you'd write some jet skis out there, I know, it's really great. Okay, um, so I wanted to just say, we have an election season, that we have two city council seats, Laura and Alan are up this year. And I do have packets, if anybody wants a packet, and think you wanna run for city council. Um, and then I wanted to give you an update on computer software. So, I told you that the guy that does all the software stuff passed away. If our printer dies, if the computer dies, I can't just plug and play something, 'cause it's written for that old computer and that old printer, and that are, I think originally bought in two thousand and two. So, I, in this Blue Cross meeting, it's been good, because I've been able to talk to other little small communities like ours. And this is the software that most of them use, it's called Black Mountain Software. Um, I spoke to a lady, she gave me a quote that is kind of a rough quote, I have a Zoom meeting scheduled with her on the nineteenth, where we'll, I'll be able to do a demo, and really, we can fine tune what we really need and what we don't need. But if you wanna look at the things that they have to offer, um, so utility billing, they actually can offer us a actual, like, online utility billing, you can make an account and go in and pay your bill. Um, and, or payrollless billing. Uh, I thought that was pretty cool, it all just come with a price. Uh, your budgeting, uh, asset manager, that was one she kinda questioned if we really need, 'cause we're so small. She's like, you could probably do it on a spreadsheet, payroll, um, you can do like direct deposits for checks and stuff, I don't think that's a big deal right now for us, 'cause we're so small. Um, but I think with the utility billing, part of the payment is I could actually like direct deposit checks that I receive instead of having to go to the bank. But it does come with a price, so the install year would be twenty-six thousand, and then every year after that is thirteen thousand. That's for like the max, everything, right?
The thing is, is you have to have it.
But you have to have it, you can't just go to like QuickBooks, there's certain functions that we have to have at the city. There is one other company, I talked to the auditor, and he gave me some contact information. So I'll call the people in Shoshone, there's a company called Two M, he said, I don't think they have real great customer service, or these guys do. I've heard that a lot from everybody, like, they do monthly trainings, they do, anytime I had an issue, I could call and it's free, or directive data, he did do that, but he did charge you for it, so.
And you can't use something like QuickBooks, why?
I think it has to do with the fund accounting, and, um, I don't know, maybe you know the name of the code, there's like a.
Well, 'cause you have to keep your funds all separate, and QuickBooks probably doesn't have the ability to do that as well as your.
There are cities that do do it, but.
You can do it, I know, because I've done it.
As long as you can keep those funds separate.
Yeah.
And they can, because you can sell.
But you can't do utility billing.
Why can't you?
Through QuickBooks?
Yep.
You can do all of that.
Yeah, businesses do that all the time.
Oh, yeah.
I did it all for a state agency, I've just been told there's, and there's a state code, I don't know the code that you have to, your software has to meet.
I'd be very surprised if Quick, QuickBooks doesn't meet the state codes, because that's a selling point for them.
I, I love state agencies.
Yeah.
But that, so they, QuickBooks charges for every little thing that you do on QuickBooks. Any add-ons, it's a natural charge.
No.
So, there's sometimes, like, on these, if this can run, you know, your guys' system here, um, and I have to be relying on, uh, something like QuickBooks, you know, 'cause.
Have you done QuickBooks?
I would, I would agree with you on that, with your auditor, because the other side of it is, if the stuff is committed to them.
Not just me.
Efficiently.
Because I've used it for three years.
So, I mean, I would work with your auditor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they charge based on the amount of work, too, so, I would work with your auditor.
So, yeah, I don't know if this tells me.
Because I have to do all of the paperwork and everything for the auditors. I have to give a report to the boards, to the auditor, and go through everything. Any questions or whatever?
Maybe, maybe you could come in and visit with Robin and talk about that.
Well, I'm just saying, as a city, there are different regulations. That's what I've been told.
Wow.
Like, you can do QuickBooks, but there's extra work to that, too.
Maybe just consult.
I don't know what that would be, but, um, yeah. 'Cause we did billing and taxes and payroll.
Well, it's not an emergency, we don't have to do it today or tomorrow. There's, there's a little time, so.
Yeah.
And call our auditors and find out what they said.
Yeah, because everything that we had in there went to, you had to have a set amount of what went to for electrical, for sewer, for water, for maintenance, and it all had, you'd be coded to come out of the right account. And it gives you a report, you can pull a report anytime you want to on it.
Can I have a spreadsheet?
Huh?
I can spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's even more, much easier than a spreadsheet.
Let me see the budget report.
So what are the other cities using?
A lot of them use this software, or one called Casell, which is more.
Blackwood's Casell, and it's super expensive.
Yeah. This is geared.
Super expensive, so let's kick that one to the curb.
This is geared toward cities our size. And, um, Black Mountain and Casell are actually sister companies now. This is what our budget report looks like. If you wanna look at that.
I'll do my best, 'cause this is really small writing.
And maybe like.
Can you guys can get together?
Part of the trick of it is the auditor adjustments at the end of the year, too.
Those are easy.
There is a way to put those in?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
It's so easy.
Yeah, I would discuss.
I just know what I've heard.
Do you think consult and? Don't work in front of them.
Yeah, but that's what I have found on that.
So we have to do something, so if you can, yeah. Maybe you can find out what the code is that says what kind of we have?
I've, I've looked at it, I just can't remember it, and what they call it. There's a term. I've been Googling it a lot.
Top of your head, do you, Garrett?
That's right, in terms of your resume.
Do you know the code that says what we have to have for software?
We'll deal with that side of things.
It's okay.
I've been Googling this a lot.
Oh, I know, that's why I was wondering, 'cause I, I didn't know that, because it makes sense that we have to have a certain standard of software.
We have to be able to show and track what's coming in, and what's going out, and what goes.
Idaho, is that why?
I don't know.
'Cause that'd be a law passed with Transfer Idaho that has to have everything downloaded in a certain format. I wonder if that's what they're referring to.
Oh, I forgot about Transfer Idaho.
Yeah, Transfer Idaho, and it has to come in in the state's directed forms. And I know there's some programs that don't comply with that, I wonder if that's what they're talking about.
Well, I know that, um, Robert Dial was looking for software. This must.
Just, because they can't.
They pick one?
I don't think they have, they can't. And I know Robert was complaining about that, because what they have doesn't comply with Transfer Idaho.
Which he uses QuickBooks.
Yeah, okay.
And why is he wanting to switch from QuickBooks?
Well, since Transfer Idaho, the city, all the cities have to, uh, fill out and submit all these forms to the state.
Right.
On a periodic basis, and it has to come in in their format. And QuickBooks can't, I know, like, Robert, they's using QuickBooks, I know that's what he was using. But they were, because they can't submit the forms the way the state wants them. And so it's one of these unfunded mandates that the state legislature forces on everybody.
The NRS.
So I wonder if that's what they're talking about.
Maybe, that is, because state agencies use QuickBooks.
I've just, I know I've read it on Google, and then I know that other clerks that I've talked to were talking about it.
For me, as, as a, somebody paying utilities and stuff like that here, that's gonna have to be passed on. And that's a lot of money.
Sure is, yeah.
It's a lot of money to pass on to everybody in this town, and a lot of them elderly on very limited incomes. And I think that's a big consideration.
And, like I said, this is like their whole function, right?
Right, so we'll knock off some of those things, some of those things we don't need to have.
Yeah, so let's find out what she says on the nineteenth.
Um, Chris, uh, you know, just retired from Kennedy Wilson Property Management, so I've been tempted to work for another one. And they're, they're all property management companies, which do property management for states, just about every state in the United States and federal government, they all use Yardi. Y-A-R-D-I. And she, uh, Chris said Yardi, but it's, it's, it's way more than what the city needs, but.
It's probably like Casell or something.
But they can, they're also scalable, too. So, that might be something to check into, they may have, have something that fits perfect and meets all the state, you know, you know, billing stuff and everything, 'cause when she was at Kennedy Wilson, she did all the universities of California. She did, uh, not, I mentioned, Council in Nevada, Nevada's University in Las Vegas, Phoenix, um, Seattle, and Portland was all on her plate. And so they all, you know, those states all use, uh, stuff from Yardi. They're gonna add some stuff to those states, so I, but I don't know about Idaho, if, if Idaho's put something on hand or not. But, that's on the email, I'll, I'll, click call to them or something to give you the information on that.
I don't think so, from what I read.
The transparency, it's not just Idaho, it's federal.
Well, that's Idaho law.
Yeah, that one's Idaho, but.
Yeah, I've heard it's in many states, but that's just the, the Transfer Idaho is Idaho law.
All right.
There is federal regulations, not, well, maybe it's not federal, I don't know.
Their state has federal for all of it.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Because the state reports to the federal government and all that. And each city and township reports.
To the state or county, that all goes uphill, or downhill, whichever way you wanna look at it.
Unfortunately, we have to upgrade, so.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's coming, so.
Yeah, we had that conversation, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Like, you've got to get.
Keep functioning back in two thousand.
No, it has to evolve, yeah. There's better options and better programs.
There is another company that probably is more similar to what we had, kind of maybe more local run, but that's not always great either.
No, clearly, it's not running way back here, which was that person who passed a little bit.
Nothing. Does this tie into our water, um, software and all that stuff that needs to be fixed, too?
That's what, oh, no, that's a whole different thing, this data.
That's more money.
That's a can of worms, so apparently you don't wanna open.
And the one quote that we've had on that is like forty-six thousand.
Holy shit. Is that for the water meters?
No, no. That's for the state that communicates.
Stuff that, after that lightning strike, we're running on marginal.
Yeah, that's another story for another day.
Okay, another day. Anything else?
This is through the state, uh, Transfer Idaho, but it gives the Secretary of State the power to prescribe and install and modify and to enforce an accurate modern system of accounting, finance, reporting to the state of Idaho and all of its, city, I mean. I'll mention that that's all through that, is state, all through that, right through Idaho. Anyway, I'm sure that's where it's coming from. Robert got that right, where it's coming from.
Okay, well, I guess we'll talk about it next month.
Somebody's gotta make a motion.
I make a motion, Adrian.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks.